Kelly, you got me?
Yes, ma'am.
Great. Bye, Con.
Hey, Tamara, how are you?
I'm good.
How are things in the?
Kelly, do we have?
I think Lane is joining us right now.
Okay.
Lane's having trouble connecting, so he'll be on in just a second.
Okay. Well, let's just wait for him.
Kelly, Karen, I'm sorry, she stepped away. Where did we settle on the two firms? I know I voted, but I don't remember which two were the ones we selected for today.
I believe that it was Find Great People and Baker Tilly. That's what's on.
What I thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't look at the agenda. That would have probably been a good place to start.
That's okay.
We were talking to you, but I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, that is.
Yes, got it. Opened it, but didn't look at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick question while we have the time. Since the item number six is probably going to be a quick one. Make any sense to move that to the beginning and allow? If it doesn't matter, but. Probably not going to take as much time.
We can discuss that. That's great. You might make that motion. I don't know if Graham wants to weigh in on that.
Council's pleasure.
Council's pleasure. Great, thank you. So, Brian, you might bring that up in a motion. At the adoption of the agenda.
To that end, should we maybe do that first?
That's what Brian was saying. I think it's a good idea, too. That would give them more time to. The other part of the team to do the other things that need to be done.
Yes, Graham, you're going to be with us for the entire meeting anyway, so it really doesn't matter, right?
Yes, I'll be here. So whenever you want to do it, I'll be ready to present.
Okay, I guess it does. It doesn't matter. I was thinking he was going to be just for that purpose, but this is a public meeting, if I now remember.
Yeah, it is. So, Kelly, are we having any luck?
Yes, Lane's with us now.
Sorry about that. I have computer problems.
Okay. So, since we are all here now, I will call the meeting to order. This is the recessed meeting of October 19th, 2021. Continued from October 22nd, 2021. It is 9:05. The city is operating under a state of emergency declaration related to the spread of COVID-19. The city council meeting will be held electronically to remain consistent with limiting physical interactions and the potential spread of COVID-19, and council chambers will be closed. The meeting will be streamed live at salisburync.gov/webcast on the city's Twitter account as well. Will you join me in a moment of silence? And now we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
We are now at the adoption of the agenda. Council is to discuss proposals from the recruiting firms to conduct the search for a new city manager. Ms. Christine Mack with Find Great People and Ms. Ann Lewis from Baker Tilly will be on our agenda. And number six, council to consider accepting ownership of Bell Tower Green and adopting a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute agreements related to the transfer of the park ownership. So, does anyone want to make a motion at this time?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion we approve, but we just reverse the order of these two items to handle the Bell Tower Green issue first. By move, we approve with the Bell Tower Green issue being on the agenda, number five, and the discussion with our recruiting firms to be on the agenda as number six.
Thank you, Brian. So we have a motion. I will call the question. David Post.
Aye.
Al Higgins.
Aye.
Tamara Sheffield. Brian Miller.
Aye.
Karen Alexander, aye. Motion carries. So we will now start with. The suggested motion or consideration of the accepting the ownership of the Bell Tower Green Park and adopting a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute agreements related to the transfer of the park ownership. So, Graham, would you lead us into that discussion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, good morning. This is a resolution to approve two agreements related to accepting ownership of the park. One is the larger of the two agreements is an operations and maintenance agreement. This has been contemplated as part of the transfer since its inception, that the park would be built by Bell Tower Green with significant private contributions and also some public input from the city of Salisbury, Rowan County, and the state of North Carolina. City Salisbury's contribution, in addition to its in-kind contributions, is going to be $700,000 for the purchase price, $350,000 of that is going to be reimbursed by the Part F grant from the state of North Carolina. The operations and maintenance agreement just requires the city to maintain the park in perpetuity. So the city will own the park and the city will maintain the park in its first-class condition, as it suggests in the agreement. It was modeled on the Hurley Park Agreement, so there's going to be a similar relationship between the city and Bell Tower Green going forward, as there is between the city and the Hurley Foundation. So this Bell Tower Green will continue, as you saw in the paper this morning, or if you haven't read it, suggest to take a look at the article. The Renn House would be one of their revenue generating properties, and the revenue from that would be used for help the city with the upkeep of the park. But the city has the obligation to keep up the park. So that's what this agreement does. There's some other pieces in it. I sent it to you yesterday. If you have any questions about it, I'd be happy to answer them. The other one is just an assignment agreement for warranties. It's kind of a technical thing. And also a license for the city to use the Bell Tower Green logo in partnership with Bell Tower Green for advertising the park and for park events and that kind of thing.
Okay, thank you.
I'd be happy to answer any questions, but what I've prepared is a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign those two agreements and to accept ownership of the park, the city council to accept ownership of the park.
Okay, thank you. So I'll turn it to council. Any questions for Graham or any comments?
I have one picky-you little comment, Graham. It says completed construction of a $12 million park. I wonder if it should say in excess of 12 million? I mean, they're still spending money on the Renn House, like you said, in the paper day. I mean, it's not exactly 12 million. Like I said, it's picky-you. The number 13 million was also tossed out. I don't know if the 12 million says and means anything, but.
I had conversations with Bell Tower Green leadership over this, about what number to put there, and we just came to 12 million because we haven't had an appraisal of it, and that's roughly what it's valued at. That's what the title policy is insured for. So that's why I put 12 million in there. It likely is in excess of that. I don't think it's quite $13 million, probably in excess of 12 million. But I think 12 million is the number that's been thrown around as the value of this park. And I don't want to understate the generosity of Bell Tower Green. And it's a $12 million park, and we're getting it for $350,000 when you consider the money from the state.
Yeah, you had me at hello. I mean, that's a pretty easy deal to take just about any day. So with council's pleasure, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the execution delivery of documents in connection with the transfer of the Bell Tower Green Park at Standback Square from the Bell Tower Green Incorporated to the city of Salisbury.
And we have a motion. Thank you, Brian. And I will call the question. David Post.
Aye.
Alzina Higgins.
Aye.
Tamara Sheffield.
Aye.
Brian Miller.
Aye.
Karen Alexander, aye, for a unanimous motion. Thank you, council. This is a really wonderful day in the history of Salisbury. So, Graham, you can now get to work.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, so we will now move to number six, which is council to discuss proposals from recruiting firms to conduct the search for a new city manager.
Is this, excuse me, one second. Since this is personnel-related anyway, is this done in closed session or in open session?
This is an open session item. It's not, it's related to hiring a full-time employee, but we're contracting with an outside agency to perform that search. So this is all open session.
The interview of the agency is considered open session?
Yes.
Good.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification, David. So. How will we do this? Are we allowing Ms. Kristin Mack from Find Great People in first?
Yes, she'll be our first presenter. She's joining the meeting as a panelist.
Okay, wonderful.
And while we're here, we've got. Three hours, roughly, a little bit less than that now, to arrive, to have this conversation. I know we don't need to be in a hurry, but I do think it would be wise for us to approach this as if today we're going to make a decision on which firm we want. Now, if for some reason we get thrown a curveball and we don't think we've got the right firm, then we don't have to. But I personally would like to recommend to the council that we make a decision today. But having said that, we need to make sure we're backing up on the back end of this meeting with enough time to have whatever discussion we need. So what kind of guardrails would we want to put on the first discussion and the second, and then allow us enough time at the end? Are we looking at 45 minutes per group, an hour per group? What is it that we have in mind?
We allotted an hour. Mr. Miller? We scheduled the first interview at nine and the second interview at 10:00.
Okay, so in other words, the first one's going to get about 45 minutes instead of an hour, since we're starting the way we did. Okay.
And I think that time would allow questions.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so we are ready whenever she is.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for making time to be with us this morning. Well, I'm Kristin Mack. I lead the public sector search practice here at Find Great People, and I'm going to share my screen with you really quickly, if that is okay. So I've been with Find Great People since 2012 and have been focused specifically on public sector recruitment since 2016. In my earlier career with Find Great People, I worked across industry sectors, but more specifically in finance and accounting search before transitioning to public sector and C-suite search. So with that being said, I know you all have our proposal. So what I thought I'd do today is talk more about process in the way that we assess candidates and really kind of walk through that so that your questions may be about process and assessment might be answered today more thoroughly. So with that being said, I'm going to start with just our search process, Matt. This is the sort of high-level visual of the process. One thing that I always share with clients is we can be very flexible. So while this is a process that works very well, at the same time, you all may have some specific needs, and we can accommodate that. So just know we would work with you as a group to finalize the process on the front end and make sure that we're able to communicate that clearly, of course, to candidates and, of course, to you all as well. So we all are aligned on the front end. I'd like to spend a little bit of time very specifically talking about our discovery phase, which is this first section here. This is really, I would say, one of the most critical stages of the process because this is where we ensure alignment. And we also engage with stakeholders that you all select for us to engage with, to understand the needs of the city, to understand your organization, the culture, the culture that you want to build, if there's anything that you'd like to change. If there is, or if there are any special projects that are coming up, we're going to dig into those some so that we can not only communicate those effectively when we're engaging with candidates, but we also want to make sure that we're incorporating that into our position announcement and the way that we're advertising for the position. So, for example, you know, we would schedule stakeholder interview listening sessions where we're going to talk with you all one-on-one. We're going to seek additional guidance from you in terms of whether or not there are community stakeholders that you'd like for us to engage with, if there are any employees that you'd like to be a part of that process. Really doing that work, that engagement work on the front end and that very first step gives people the opportunity to feel like they're a part of the process, but not part of the selection process, if that makes sense. You want their engagement and their input, but ultimately it's your decision at the end of the day, you know, who you choose to hire for this role. So we want to make sure we've got that engagement and that sort of buy-in to the process initially, and then we can adapt our process moving forward based on what we hear in those community stakeholder listening sessions and our listening sessions with you all and any employees that you choose to engage. We're also going to do a lot of research on the front end. So you know, some of that is just really trying to understand the services that you all provide as a city. We're going to look into your budget documents, your strategic plan, your comprehensive improvement plan, all of those sorts of things, just again, to make sure that we really understand enough about the city to make the opportunities seem appealing and to make sure that we're communicating the opportunity that someone has to really impact the city if they move forward with this position. That being said, we're also going to research comparable cities. You know, our process is very targeted, so we don't rely on candidates just applying to a posting. With the market, the way that it is, that just doesn't work anymore, frankly. So we have to be really diligent about our targeted and proactive recruitment efforts. And so we're going to look at other cities that are comparable in size. We're going to look at cities that maybe have comparable demographic data. We're going to look at cities that have similar challenges, those sorts of things. So we're really going to be thoughtful about the way that we outreach. So we start small and then are more targeted, and then we kind of branch out as we continue through the process to make sure we have enough candidates in the pool to have a successful search. Once we get through those discovery phase items, we'll put together our position profile, which is what we call our position announcement essentially. So we're going to have information, of course, about the city, information about the opportunity, and then we're going to get that, we're going to go to market with that document, of course. We'll post that in several different locations. ICMA, for example, will be a starting point. So we'll make sure that we're actively advertising that as we are also proactively recruiting. Once we begin the process of beginning to engage with candidates and assess candidates, we're also going to put together what we call a competency model, and that's really looking at some of the soft skills. So we're going to be looking at, you know, things like strategic leadership. We're going to be looking at effective communication, those sorts of things. We're going to develop that competency model based on our listening sessions as well. So we're going to take your priorities. We're going to take what we hear from the other stakeholders, and we're going to bring that together and sort of synthesize that down to really a focused document. And I'll show you that to you in just a moment, an example of that in just a moment. So that will be part of our evaluation process as we begin to engage with candidates. We'll be looking at their backgrounds to fit both our requirements in terms of experience, education, et cetera, coupled with those leadership competencies. As we screen candidates, they typically are going to go through several different phases of screening within Find Great People's team. So we'll have our initial conversations, of course, to understand their experience and sort of see how that fits into what we're looking for. If they move past that Phase One screening, we'll move them to our Phase Two leadership interviews. Those are conducted either in person or via Zoom, depending on their location. And that's when we really dive into understanding how their leadership style could potentially impact you all as a city. Is that going to fit your needs in terms of the culture within your organization and the way that people respond to leadership there? So we'll really be thoughtful about that. So we're going to tell their story when we have a chance to meet with you and talk through the candidates based on those leadership interviews, as well as, of course, the skill set interviews initially. If they move past our Phase Two Zoom interviews or in-person interviews, that's when we'll conduct all of our final media checks. We'll look in both news media and social media. We're just going to make sure that there's nothing out there that could potentially be problematic for you. We're going to create awareness if there's something that we see in an article that we just think you may want to factor into your consideration process. We're going to do all that on the front end for you. Our goal is, of course, to create awareness so that we're not getting to the end of the process and there's something that, you know, sort of derails your ability to move forward with someone. So as we complete our recruiting process, we're going to schedule a time to meet with you all, probably via Zoom like this, to talk through each of the candidates. When we have that presentation, we'll, of course, be sharing their resume and background information. Candidates are also going to complete some just brief question and answer documents for us where they are able to express some thoughts on their leadership style and ability to lead strategic planning processes and those sorts of things. It's in their own words, and that way you'll have the opportunity to not only hear from them directly, they sort of have a voice in that presentation, but also you'll have a chance to see, of course, their writing abilities and those sorts of things, which is kind of a preliminary way to view that. We're also going to talk through again how their leadership can impact the city. So you're going to get that perspective as we're presenting candidates. We typically would suggest from that point, of course, narrowing the pool a little bit and maybe having something like six to eight people moving forward to your first round of interviews. We have been conducting those primarily via Zoom right now, just with the pandemic situation. So that has worked really well for a first round. That being said, if you prefer for them to come in person, we obviously can do that as well, so we'll be flexible with that. And then as we move forward, when you get through that first round of Zoom interviews and you're narrowing down to what I would call our semifinalists or even your finalist group, that's when we're going to schedule, of course, the in-person interview. But they're also going to have some assessments that they're going to work through with us between that first interview and that second interview. Specifically, it's our Profile XT assessment. I'll talk more about that in just a moment. But as candidates come in for their final round interviews, they'll have that assessment taken care of. We'll talk through. We'll talk through those results and how the results of each candidate might be important to consider as they're all being measured on sort of this high-impact behavioral leadership traits. And again, I'll talk about that a little bit more momentarily, but so they'll take that. And then we also suggest that our finalists present to council and, and of course, any other stakeholders that you'd like to include. We will provide candidates with a very specific presentation topic. We'll say that's maybe about 30 minutes or so where they're going to have the opportunity to speak to that topic. We put together guidelines, so everyone is, you're working from the same set of instructions, if that makes sense. So it's really interesting to see first their ability to think strategically, you know, how they prioritize, what they prioritize in those conversations. And of course, gives you the ability to see how they present publicly as well. So we know all of that is an important part of the decision-making process for roles like this. Normally, our clients are able to make a decision after those first round of in-person, excuse me, interviews. That being said, we do always sort of factor in the potential need for one final interaction with candidates, particularly if you have maybe two people that you're trying to, to make a final decision between. And so we can talk through a little bit more of what you would want that last interaction to look like. We think sometimes it's nice to include something that feels a little bit more casual, where you're having lunch or dinner, something like that, where you can really get a better sense of who the person is. So that's the suggestion as well. Now, we will, of course, work with you as you're getting to the final selection process in terms of, you know, finalizing the background check, completing all of those final references and just kind of dotting the i's and crossing the t's in the final stages. So we'll, of course, work with you up until the point where you have a signed contract in hand and feel comfortable about moving forward. As we think about search strategy, you know, we really, I talked a minute ago about, of course, being very targeted in our approach. This is really setting the search strategy and aligning the search strategy with you all on the front end is really how we can ensure the best case scenario, right? Going through the process one time, identifying your selected candidate and being able to, to get that transition plan in place. So we do that by, of course, conducting those stakeholder interviews and creating that alignment. But specifically, it's taking that information and what we learned from you and putting that into, to strategy and practice. So again, we're looking at smaller organizations, doing a lot of research. We're networking and connecting with national associations, specifically in this case, ICMA is, is our starting point. And then the other thing that I would say is, you know, creating that, that awareness of the position obviously is, is important. But also for us to have the best opportunity of communicating effectively with candidates, it's creating again that organizational awareness, making sure we really do understand enough about the city to be able to speak to that. The networking component is particularly critical, as you all probably know. You know, it's not always about just networking with people that we think have potential to be a fit. It's networking with people who are thought leaders in the industry, who have connectivity in the industry and really understand the entire ecosystem. We always are pursuing passive candidates, you know, those who are not necessarily looking, but we just happen to reach out at the right time and entice them to, to move forward. You know, we really also rely on getting referrals from people like Lane, you know. Reach out and, you know, see from their opinions, who they respect in the industry. The other thing that we try to factor in and really try to be very deliberate and intentional around is our diversity recruiting efforts as well. So we typically will look at, you know, some of the demographic information for the city and try to make sure that at the end of the day, when we present our candidate pool, that that is reflective of the demographics that we see in your city. We really want to be thoughtful about that. Additionally, of course, we'll leverage our technology tools and database access, of course, to, to interact with candidates. And some of those are, you know, candidates that are in our own database, but also, of course, utilizing tools like LinkedIn to, to access candidates as well. We also do a lot of very deliberate research. And so, for example, you know, sometimes you can't rely on tools like, like LinkedIn, for example. So you really do have to do very deliberate research, looking city to city to see who you need to, to reach out to. As we are getting to the phases where we're, you know, working to select candidates, you know, that's really when we're factoring in and evaluating experience and qualifications. We're looking at their fit for the community in terms of their, you know, alignment around the community, their alignment with your mission and values, and also, of course, what we know you have coming in the next several years in terms of projects or programs or initiatives. You had some candidates that have experiences that align with those really typically are, are the best fit. We're also looking at their potential impact on the organization. So let's say if there's, you know, some, if you see a gap, if you recognize a gap in the organization or if you notice that there is some interest in pursuing a certain, you know, initiative in the next few years, we're going to help you find candidates that can either fill that gap or help you lead through that particular initiative that you're pursuing. Again, talking about diversity and representation, we're going to make sure that we're thoughtful about that. And then lastly, when we're evaluating candidates, we're really looking at that retention and tenure. You all have probably heard some of the statistics in terms of average tenure in city manager seats. It's, Lane's unusual in terms of being in the seat as long as he has been. We don't see that as often anymore, but we're really thoughtful about that when we're recruiting candidates because, you know, typically if you see a pattern of 18 months or a year, I mean, that's what you can expect to experience as well, right? So we know that if we want to find a long-term fit, we need to find some stability in those backgrounds. I mentioned earlier about our assessment process. The first step in our assessment process is evaluating candidates against our competency model. Now, this particular competency model is one that we have used previously. That being said, this is customized to our client. So what we do is as we conduct our stakeholder listening sessions, we're looking for the sort of themes that we hear from people, particularly when we ask about competencies or when we ask about leadership or experiences. And so for this particular example, you can see we've chosen, you know, contagious leadership as, as an area of interest. We looked at things like results orientation for this particular client. But again, this is customized to you all and all, again, based on our listening sessions and our interactions with you all. We're going to make sure it aligns specifically with what you're looking for. As FGP is interacting with candidates, we're going to score them against this model. And that's really how we sort of determine, you know, which candidates are going to make that final slate. We also recommend that you all do this as well. So as we begin the interactions with you all and you have those first round of Zoom interviews, for example, what we typically recommend is, you know, take a look at that competency model, you know, rank candidates based on the competency model, give them a score. We've got a scoring mechanism. We can explain, of course, if you choose to do that. But what we find is, is that that allows the process to be very objective. And so if we're putting some data behind it, it gives you the ability to, to sort of look at candidates, compare the scores and then you create that sort of cutoff line where we say, okay, this group of four, this group of three is the group that we're going to bring forward to the next stage. I have some clients that, that prefer to do the scoring. I have others that prefer to do your ranking when it's time to narrow the pool. We're comfortable either way. We just like to give you some options. This works well and has a little bit more structure. So as we move forward into that final round of interviews, we can revisit the competency model scoring or just do a straight ranking at that, at that stage. Next, our Profile XT Assessment, which candidates would take between the phase, I mean, excuse me, Zoom interactions with you all and the final round interviews. So the candidates that are chosen as finalists will take this. What the Profile XT does really is it looks at two things. So first, it looks at a candidate's sort of cognitive abilities, their thinking style. And then it also looks at high-impact behavioral traits. So the behavioral traits really tie into their ability to lead the organization. The Profile XT is not a proprietary product of Find Great People. It is a third-party product, but we have just found it to be best in market. It's really effective. Candidates feel like they're taking the SAT for that thinking style. They don't love that part, but it's really, it's really a great information to have. We also recognize that, you know, you never are going to make a decision, you know, based on an assessment, right? It's just more information for you as you're getting through those final rounds of interviews. It, it sometimes can be a differentiator, but what we typically see is it either validates a concern that you might have, you know. So if there's a score, let's say if there's a score in that objective judgment, that, that maybe gives you pause, it may just validate something that you've seen in the interview process. Or at the same time, you know, if there's some, some sort of concern that you see in the interview process, sometimes the assessment can help us overcome that as well. If the scoring would suggest, you know, that, that we can overcome that particular issue. That being said, one of the things that we do, once we get all of the XT assessments back, is we actually will create a sort of a candidate map. So we'll present this to you in a way where we're comparing candidates to one another. So you're going to be able to see, you know, really how each person sort of fits into what we call a performance model. So the performance model is based on scores. We're, we're sort of compiling and, and sort of creating a median score, if you will, for all candidates who are currently city managers who have taken the assessment. Millions of people have taken this assessment, so there's a lot of data to pull from when we create that performance model. So we'll be able to talk about, you know, who kind of fits within the model and the ones that are, have scores that are outliers. We're going to talk through how that could impact the organization, either positively or not. And that way you just have awareness going in. So again, it's not the, the tool that will help you make your final decision, but it will give you more information as you're approaching that decision. Does anybody have questions about the Profile XT? I don't know if y'all have ever used that assessment or heard of that assessment. Is that something that y'all are familiar with at all?
So Brian, it looks like Brian is familiar with it. He's one of our council members.
Excellent.
Actually, I'm not. I was just going to ask, Kristin, you said it's not proprietary. Who is the owner, if you will, of this? And is it, is it purely for C-suite talent or is it, what's the genesis of, of how it was developed?
It's a great question. Profiles International is the company that, that created the assessment and manages the assessment. And they have, I think the last number they shared with us was something like nine million people have taken the assessment. There's a lot of data. It has, historically, it has primarily been used for C-suite talent. That being said, that has broadened over the years. And so we actually use it for a number of, of different level of professionals. So I would say typically it's, it's reserved for our either retained searches or our higher-level searches. So I would say, you know, director, you know, through C-suite typically will have candidates taking the assessment. The performance models are really interesting, so they can actually create a performance model for us for, for nearly any type of position. So we can give them really specifics. We can say, you know, we're looking for, even in this instance, we're looking for a city manager performance model. So they're going to pull all the data that they have for city managers, compile that. And then they essentially give us a score, so we, I mean, a range. So when we look at, let's say if we look at energy level here, they might have, you know, maybe five through eight shaded. So they would say the performance model, you know, the typical city manager, according to their data, has, you know, a score between, you know, five and eight or whatever the, the performance model comes back with. And so we'd be able to sort of compare that, of course, to each candidate. It's, you will see, it's interesting, we pull the performance models for things like a city manager versus something, let's say, a, a sales director, really wildly different, you know, at the end of the day. What we typically talk with people about is, is balance. So in the behavioral traits section, in this bottom section, we like to see scores that are somewhere between, let's say, you know, four and seven, that, that sort of middle ground shows a lot of balance because the scoring, the one and the 10 represent extreme behaviors in each of those different areas. And so, you know, one thing that we try to make sure that we're creating awareness around is if someone has, you know, let's say if someone has a one on, I'll go back to energy level. If they have a one on energy level, that's going to tell us that they're really slow-paced, you know, maybe have trouble sort of completing tasks, you're getting things finalized. And so we would make you aware if we see something in that assessment, you know, evaluation that just gives us some pause and, and makes us concerned that someone might not be successful in the position. It's a really great tool. I remember when I took it, I first came to FGP, so we have all of our staff take it. The, the cognitive section, it was interesting. It definitely felt like I was taking the SAT again, so doing some math that I hadn't done since, since college.
Did you agree with the profile I gave you? I'm sorry, Al, just. You did? Okay, good. Sorry, Al, I yield.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Brian. And Kristin, is it Kristin or Christine?
Kristin.
Okay, thank you, Kristin. So as I'm looking at this and I hear you explaining about the behavioral traits and that you kind of want to see anywhere between four and seven and that one's kind of low, one or 10, either of those can be extreme. But when we look up here at the thinking style, I would think that as that number increases, that might be a good thing?
Yes, yes. I'm glad you asked that question, so I should have mentioned that. So this, we do look at the scoring differently in the thinking style. So in this section, this sort of eight, nine, 10 range is basically showing us that someone has that, I would say the highest level of ability in terms of verbal skill and, you know, numeric, your abilities. That being said, it's, it would, it's not bad if someone, let's say, is in the five, six or seven. What that would tell us is the person that would score in the five, six, seven range is someone who sort of learns more typically, if that makes sense. So this sort of balance between, you know, hands-on and, and conceptual. And so the, the eight, nine and 10 scoring typically is telling us that that person can learn conceptually. They just have the highest abilities to learn quickly. But what we have seen or what we have learned is that that five, six, seven range is sort of the more, the more typical way that people learn. So it's not a bad thing. It just depends on the position. And so sometimes, for example, if someone is scoring, let's say a 10 in verbal skill, you know, if they're working with people that also don't have a 10 in a verbal skill or something similar, they're going to have to be really careful about their language choices, right? They're going to need to be, you know, thoughtful about communicating in a way where people that they're working with can understand the message that they're trying to share. And so while that's a great benefit, you know, we, we would maybe mention that to you, for example, is, hey, okay, this might be something to be aware of, so there could need to be coaching around that. So not something that would be a disqualifier, but something, let's just coach around that a little bit.
And what I don't see on this assessment and a piece that I'm also looking for is I, I don't know which of these areas would speak to a person's emotional intelligence, to their EI. And also, I, I don't see here where it may speak to their understanding of applying an equity lens to the work that they're doing. So where could some of that fall? And I'm listening, somebody rang my doorbell, so as you're answering that, I'm going to hit my door. I'm so sorry.
Yeah, that's a really great question. So I'll mention quickly first, for the, I would say the DE and I-oriented evaluation, we would actually want to make sure that we're incorporating that into the way that we build out the competency model. So there could be, so for example, in this particular one, I think we've got global and cultural ability, but we can have a specific section oriented to that or we incorporate that, some criteria into each of these sections where we're thinking about that lens as it relates to talent development, as it relates to, you know, engaging in the community and those sorts of things. So, so this is a great place to incorporate some of that. With the emotional intelligence pieces, so I will tell you, there are some, some of these criteria will vet out some of that, that for you. So for example, things like, when we look at this particular sex, like attitude, sometimes we, we. sometimes we we use the word outlook for that, and it's basically someone's ability to to build trust or how trusting they are, if that makes sense. There's some some components in there. Accommodation is talking with us about or telling us about how that person interacts with the group. So in a group setting, are they, you're willing to to go with the group decision? Are they going to be the person that's sort of pushing back against the group? Are they willing to ask questions, you know, some of those things? The other thing I will say is, again, back in the competence model, we're gonna want to make sure that we're building out the competency model where we are factoring in those soft skills that do factor in the EQ component. And so it's really, this is a very deliberate part of the process. And we've got to make sure that as we build this out, it does address any area of concern that that you would have, particularly particularly when you think about how that person's going to fit into the group. How, when I say the group, how they're gonna fit into to working with you all, but also how they're gonna lead the organization, you know, if if, for example, and and I think we all know the talent market right now is 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 quite challenging. Kelly, you probably are experiencing that in HR, you know, there are certain positions where it's 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 tough. So so we're gonna make sure that we're thoughtful about making sure that the the EQ needs that you have. And if there are any focus areas, I don't know if y'all have some some things that you're trying to incorporate, you know, as a city into the city organization around that. But if there's anything specific that you would want us to include, we'll make sure that that's included. But I I'll say the behavior, these high-impact behavioral trade areas, they they really do all feed into and tell us a story about someone's emotional intelligence. Because ultimately, these are all areas that tell us how the person will lead and how that leadership will impact you all and people. And we'll talk about it with that lens. So when we when we discuss the candidate map, I can I can make sure that we're communicating that with you in a way where we're we're talking specifically about the emotional intelligence, or kind of coming at it with that lens, if that makes sense. We'll make sure that that as we talk through the results, that we're thoughtful about that being an interest area of yours. So I'm glad you brought that up, and and we definitely can accommodate that.
Thank you, thank you.
Sure. Excellent. So that being said, you know, we are, this is just sort of our final closing slide here, but, you know, we we've built Find Great People in in a way where we're thoughtful about hiring people that work hard and are values-driven, mission-oriented. Our nonprofit practice and our public sector practice in particular, really thoughtful about bringing staff on who have an appreciation for those areas and a respect for those areas and want to support people who are working. And for me personally, you know, being able to support those who serve is is really important to me. Find Great People is continuing to grow. We've had significant growth over the last, you know, 10 years, 20 years. And and that's been exciting to see, and that will probably continue. And then lastly, you know, we approach our work with a sense of gratitude. That is a a primary focus of our organization. We talk about it regularly. And it's something that that really is kind of our our guiding star a little bit. It's just understanding, you know, that we're fortunate to have a wonderful company and a wonderful goal and purpose in our work. That being said, I know we still have a little bit of time left, so I wanted to see if anyone has questions about the process. You know, I can dig into some more specifics, and you're trying, of course, to give you that that high level today. But I can dig into anything more specific if if someone has additional questions.
Thank you, Christine. So I'll open it up to council. Anyone have questions for Christine?
Questions? Can you hear me okay, Kristin?
Yes.
Great. Well, thank you. I know from digging through your proposal, there's a couple of things that I had questions about. And then from listening to you explain a few things, so some of those got answered, so thank you for that.
Great.
In reference to the relationship between your profile XT assessments and your competency model, I'm gonna throw a couple of questions at you. You probably have one big answer. So what is the relationship between that assessment and how it feeds into that competency model? That's the overall guide, I would think. And then we discuss is that there's a specific fee for each one of those assessments. So my question of that is, do people sometimes already have these assessments done? If, you know, 500 people apply, do they all get assessments? How do you weed that out, since that's an expense? How do those things work in tandem of one another? Or do people usually show up with that? Or do you already have a bank of talent that you've already pushed through this process?
Yeah, that's a really good question. So so I'd say first, for the competency model, because that's that is FGP-created, that there's no additional cost for that, so keep that in mind. We essentially, with the competency model, everyone that makes it through our phase one and phase two portions of our FGP, you know, internal interview process, will be assessed against the competency model. So so essentially, you know, that first interaction that we have, that's really more trying to understand their background. You know, we're gonna be looking at the size of their organization, the size of the teams that they've led, budget responsibility. We're gonna be looking at the specific departments that have reported in, those sorts of things. We're gonna kind of check the, you know, they have the experience box, right? Then when we move to that leadership interview, our leadership interview, we will actually put together questions that are specific to these areas so that we can appropriately, you know, score them afterwards. So we're gonna make sure that we're digging into some questions around talent and team development, for example, that will help us to determine whether or not they've got some of the skill sets that we need. So this, you know, I I would say probably, let's say, the top 20 make it through the phase two interview. We'll score them against this and then narrow that down. We typically like to bring to you about the top 10, sometimes maybe, you know, one or two more than that. But usually, that's how we try to narrow it down. And then for the XT, the group of people that, after they have their initial, you know, interview with you all via Zoom, that group of finalists, so let's say it's four people, that group will take the profile XT. There is a small, you know, kind of nominal fee that's associated with that XT, which is, of course, why we reserve it for the finalists. Did that answer all?
Could we change the view? Would that be okay, so we can see each other as we ask questions?
Sure, yes, absolutely. Let me stop my
We all have these this in front available to, they were sent to us.
Okay, great, great.
And the other thing I would just toss out as we move along is, since she got started 15 minutes late, I wonder if we could make sure she has sufficient time, that we have sufficient time and notify the other group that we may be a little bit late starting them. Do would, does anybody object to that?
Oh, not at all. We give her the full hour, just as we would the other one.
Okay, thank you for that. I appreciate that.
We need it, yes. It's not your fault.
I think I didn't realize I didn't answer one portion of your question. So we do have some candidates, of course, who have already taken the profile XT. So that's a a great question. And of course, we would be able to use those same test results again. They would not need to retake the test because it doesn't really change.
How, I have a question. How do you access the XT model test if they've taken it before? Is that in a database that is associated with their name then from other interviews?
Yeah, so so we've got, we do have a database of all of the scores that our candidates have have taken. Now, if they have taken it, but it wasn't through through FGP, there may, they may have to take it again. If that's the particular instance, I'll have to dig in with our support team and just ask that question quickly because we may not be able to access that. But but we do have a database of all the candidates that we've had take take the test previously, and we just get to pull that and incorporate that in. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, David. Go ahead with your question.
Oh, no, no, I have some, but I I didn't mean to interrupt you. Go ahead.
I know. That was it for me. Thank you.
Well, I'm gonna finish asking my questions, if that's okay. When we're evaluating, so we get down to those top candidates, could you guys provide that service? Are we looking at a concurrent evaluation between that XT assessment and the competency model? I mean, is that, are we, I mean, are we just gonna, do they merge at some point for one competency model? Or do we review both of them?
That's a good question. So we evaluate them separately. But one thing that we can do is we have have a methodology where we can pull together the scores and create sort of a percent match, if that makes sense. So we'll say, you know, this, their score for the competency model was, you know, 93%. Their score for the XT was 82%, and then we merge that together. So that's one methodology, but we will keep the the assessments themselves will be separate. You can always see, okay, this is their score here, this is their score here. And then we just kind of bring it together just to to give some additional context with that that combined percent match score. And we put it together, we can put it together on a dashboard, like a candidate dashboard per person, where you'll see the XT results, the competency models results, and that then that percent match altogether in one document.
Got you. And then I just have one more question. You were discussing how you source and you use the word deliberate research. What does that mean? How how do you, in reference to you sourcing talent, I don't know what that means. Explain it.
Sure, yeah, that's a, it's a really wonderful question, and and thanks for the the opportunity to talk a little bit more about that. So when we are doing our our research, our initial research, and we're learning about you all, you know, we're gonna be looking specifically at cities that have some similarities. So similar size, similar demographics, similar geographical challenges, for example, or, you know, similar upcoming projects or or recent projects or challenges in the community. So we're gonna look at some of those things. When we go to research, you know, when it comes to size of city, for example, you know, we can access some lists to to just sort of narrow down, you know, cities that that kind of fit in that in that size range, for example. But then we're looking at those other elements to figure out, okay, in this group, where are we gonna gonna go, right? Some of our targeted research would even be as simple as going to the city's website to see, okay, who is the city manager? How long have they been there? What's the media, you know, surrounding that particular person? Are they a good target for us? You know, should we be reaching out to that person? So sometimes it's as simple as that, but other times it's looking at, you know, ICMA leadership, for example. It's looking at, you know, people that that have been named, you know, received awards recently, things like that. So we're we're looking at a lot of different elements to to pull that together. But I will say, you know, the the research component is where we spend a lot of our time. And so we've got, of course, people on this, on the team that will be doing that work in conjunction with me. And so we've got some support working through that because it does take a little bit of time. But but that being said, you know, it's, we, what we don't like to do, because we don't think it's effective, is we don't just send out a blanket email blast to every single city manager in the country, right? Like, that's that's not a great use of time, because they know that's, it's generic, and they know that that's what we're doing, right? So we don't, we don't want to go that route. So we want to be thoughtful, and we want to reach out to people with purpose.
Got you. Thank you for that, and I will get over to my ears.
Thank you, Tamara. Any other questions?
I I have a few more global questions. And maybe I'll just toss all this out, and you can pick and choose the parts, best way to answer it, because I wrote down three or four, but I'm gonna amalgamate them. My, it's kind of what does the market look like, you know, whether, first of all, whether the great resignation has hit, you know, the city leadership on a, you know, local, national scale. And related to that, whether the search, whether there's advantage or disadvantage in looking locally, meaning North, South Carolina, Virginia, as opposed to nationally, because there are a lot of things that are about our geography that might not apply to somebody from Nebraska, for example, or California, even if you have a similar-sized city. I mean, we have similar water issues. We have, I mean, our police and fire departments are, everybody around here is poaching each other. Somebody gives raises. So mine is a more global, what does the market look like? And related to that, you've got this three or four-month timeline, given if the market has been hit upside the head by the great resignation, whether that timeline might be extended. So that's, those are all my questions into one, and you can run with whatever you want, or say, I don't want to answer that.
Great. Well, I will say, so so yes, the great resignation has impacted city leadership. So I would say specifically what we've seen is just, you know, people that have been at retirement age, not retirement age, but retirement eligibility. That's why it's a retirement eligibility. You know, some of them who have continued to to work, COVID was sort of the, you know, straw that broke the camel's back, if you will, finally said, okay, I'm I'm ready to, ready to have a break. So we we have seen more retirements recently. Interestingly, not at first, you know, so I would say, you know, 2020, sort of halfway through, some of those folks that were gonna retire sort of stayed put for a little while. But but 2021, we're we're seeing that happen now. So one thing that I would mention, just from a market perspective, and and for the sake of having a really robust candidate pool, one thing that you'll probably need to do is make sure that we're incorporating in the opportunity to recruit assistant city managers and deputy city managers, as well as current cities, sitting city managers. So so kind of that that, you know, double-pronged approach where you've got, you know, experienced city managers, but step-up candidates also who are ready to to take that on, just because of the number of of resignations that we're seeing in the city manager seats. It's a really, really great question. You know, from a from a regional standpoint, I think we will get more interest from the region. So I do think we'll have more candidates from North and South Carolina, Virginia, Georgia, probably Tennessee. You know, we'll probably have more of those that are interested in the in the position organically. You know, that being said, you know, we we can, we can adjust our approach depending on your preferences. So we can do a full-blown national search. Or if you all think, at the end of the day, that because of your needs, that looking regionally is a better match, then we focus our attention regionally. So we really can do it two different ways. I think that we see, we find that it's a little easier to recruit people if we're looking outside of the region to the southeast. We find it easier to recruit from the Midwest and then some parts of the Southwest. For those two markets, we tend to have, you know, more more willingness to relocate. We are seeing, this is sort of interesting, in the last, I'd say, six to eight months, we are actually seeing more people from California and Texas that have interest in moving to North and South Carolina. So that's been interesting. I don't know.
Water, water. We have water.
Al, that's probably it. So did I answer all of your questions, David?
Yes, the the first question, which was a global, is what does the market look like? I mean, are there, with the great resignation, I mean, are there a decent candidate pool to pull from? I've heard that, you know, in some areas of the world, the candidate pools are really slim, slim pickings. And just curious what your view of the candidate pool is of this time, at this time?
Yeah, yeah. So I would say, at for this level, it's still robust enough to have a great search, if that makes sense.
That's great.
Where we're seeing the most challenges, I would say, is that kind of mid-career person. So the the group of folks that we have that work on, I would say, like, kind of mid-career, you know, let's say, manager to lower-level director role, like that that section of people, that's that's probably where we're seeing the most difficulty right now in terms of people choosing, you know, to not work for a little while. It's it's kind of interesting. I don't know. So that that level has has been the most challenging. I think the retirements are definitely impacting the city manager seat, but it it's still robust right now. but it's still robust right now, I will say. And I think part of that is because of the commitment, if that makes sense. So I just find that public sector leaders, you know, when they're in a seat like this one, and you're going through a situation like a pandemic, they're the people that are more willing to stick it out. I mean, frankly, you know, they're typically more willing to say, hey, I understand how important my role is right now, and I'm just gonna push through, you know. You know, I know there are some exceptions to that, but generally speaking, I'm talking to a lot of people who I think our biggest challenge will be the people who, because of the pandemic, feel like they can't leave their current environment. That'll be the biggest challenge, if that makes sense. So that being said, I would say, I would still suggest, excuse me, you know, having that deputy city manager and assistant city manager, you know, option as part of your pool.
Thank you, Christine. Brian Miller has lost his video, but he's still on audio, and he would like to ask some questions now. So Brian, you're on mute. Can you unmute?
Let me tell him. Let me text him.
So while we're trying to get Brian, okay, I think he just got in.
Yeah, I'm trying to have to figure this. I don't have the Zoom up. I had to use a different method, but can y'all hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you, Brian.
Okay, super, super. Kristin, two questions. You know, one of the things that David kind of alluded to, the comment about the candidate pool that's out there, and how there are probably more, there's a lot of demand for folks to step into this role because of the folks who are taking advantage of retirement opportunities. We are wanting to try and get this ball rolling, just so we can try to get someone in place, you know, earlier in the year, in twenty-twenty-two. But we do have an election coming up, and that election will impact the people who are part of this process. In other words, we might start the process today, but there might be different voices that are part of the selection, you know, down the road. So the question I have for you, you, a lot of the things you're talking about, the most important parts is the discovery phase, coming up with the priorities of the community and that sort of thing. How would you accommodate, how would you suggest you accommodate changing faces as a part of that process without slowing the process down? Does that make sense?
Yep. Thank you for that question. So what I would typically do, and as you might imagine, we actually run into this scenario quite frequently. So as we have that scenario occur, what I typically like to do is, you know, start the process with the existing council and mayor, have as many stakeholder sessions as we can. And then, of course, go ahead and have some of those community conversations. But as the new election occurs, if we have changes in any seat, we're gonna make sure that we're very quickly engaging with that particular person. Our goal then is, so let's say, if we've already created the competency model, or we're already, you know, nearly finished with, for example, the position profile, we're gonna try to incorporate the new feedback in and make some adjustments, so that that person feels like they have a voice as well. So we'll try to do all of that quickly, but what it doesn't stop us from doing is any of the initial research. It doesn't start us from starting all of those different deliverables that we'll need to get to you. Because even, you know, with the competency model, you know, for the most part, you know, those different areas are probably not going to change dramatically with new input. It'll probably just be some small changes that we'll have to make, which is fine. But we'll be able to go ahead and begin the, building out the list of candidates that we're gonna want to reach out to. We're gonna go ahead and be able to do a lot of that initial research. We're gonna be able to, you know, do things like tour the city and, you know, dig into some of the project work that's coming up. So a lot of that discovery work we'll be able to do, no matter who's sitting in the council and mayor's seats. And then we just make adjustments if we need to, you know, after the election.
Gotcha. I assume that would be something you have run into before, to just want to get it on the table and make sure it was known. The other question I have, and I may come up with one more. In the examples or reference information you gave, a lot of clients that you've had from the South Carolina market. I also see Columbia College on your resume as part of your background. See Greensboro, North Carolina as well, but again, a lot of focus in South Carolina. Do you feel like you have the reach to be able to recruit from candidate pools outside of South Carolina?
I do, I do. Yeah, that's a really great question. So, you know, one of the things that I think is important to know is even, so, for example, we have had a lot of work in South Carolina. We're headquartered there. We do a lot of work in Georgia as well. But every search that we work on is intended to be a national search. So the candidate pool and the reach that we have, it is a national reach. And so most of the positions that we recruit for, I would say, you know, when we bring the candidate pool to the table, you know, we might have one or two in-state, you know, candidates, and then the rest might be, you know, out of states. It's a really good question. So the technology tools and the research abilities that we have are very broad. So we do have that ability to connect, you know, across the country. You know, one thing that we also consider as we're conducting searches is we do think a little bit about connectivity to an area. So let's say, for example, that someone, you know, grew up there, they've moved away, they're in California now. We can do research to try to target candidates who have a scenario like that one, for example, or someone who attended, you know, college in North Carolina, maybe they're interested in getting back to the area. So there's some ways that we can be thoughtful about our national recruitment process as well, where there's a tie-in, you know, to the community. We find that we have a lot of luck in terms of tapping into those connections and that connectivity to get people, you know, to move back, if that makes sense. So, great question. I would say, you know, even though our public sector practice has been, I would say, more focused in the southeast in terms of our client base, our company as a whole recruits across the country in all sectors. And so some of our other private industry-focused executive search consultants do lots of work across the country. And so our database is quite significant. You know, we've got over twenty-two thousand people in our database alone, not including the ability that we had to use our LinkedIn databases and those sorts of things that we tap into regularly in our recruiting, recruitment and sourcing efforts.
Absolutely. Good answer. I assume that's what you'd share with me, but just wanted to make sure. Last comment, and really more of a comment, anything else, given the time is almost out. But there are some legislative or organizational type differences state to state regarding how municipalities are run and different things of that nature. Just really, really quick response to that. Would you be able to give whomever is the person's making the conversation, would you be able to compare and contrast some of those differences? If someone's coming from an out-of-state that maybe has a different system, would you be able to give us some of that context to help us understand who might be more familiar with the North Carolina system versus someone who might not be? I'm assuming you've run into that as well.
Yes, yeah, that's a really nice question. I tell you, I typically like to use my resources as a, as a well-loved teacher, my past said at one point. And I'll actually reach out to the municipal associations or the League of Cities in a specific state to talk through some of those questions that I might have as I'm comparing and contrasting, for example. So if it's, you know, a state where I've had less experience working with candidates from that particular area, I just reach out and ask a lot of questions. You know, I find that to be really helpful. But what I typically do when I present candidates is I'll give you information about the form of government for each of their current environments, as well as, you know, if they have experience working in another type of, you know, structure in their past as well. So I'll give you that information. I'll also talk with you about, you know, how services offered at the city level versus maybe the county level might be different in different states for those particular candidates as well. I find that to be really helpful, because there's, for example, there's a good number of differences between North Carolina and South Carolina, for example, with what the county offers in terms of services. And so it's sort of interesting. So I'll provide that context for you whenever I present the candidate slate. So you'll know that on the front end, and if there's anything specific that you want us to follow up on, then we'll either answer it at that time, or reach out and have a follow-up conversation to verify, you know, something specific. But that's a really important component, I would say, particularly if you have any concerns about somebody being able to, you know, make that transition to your particular form of government, if they've been in a different one. So I, you know, we'll talk through all of that at the time of the candidate presentation and before you actually have an interview with them.
Kristin, thank you so much for your time. I'll yield the floor back to the mayor.
Thank you. So is there any last question? We're actually out of time. Kristin has exhausted her hour.
Yes, she has. But I did have a question. I was trying to ask one, but Brian had the three questions. I'm curious, and this kind of goes back to what Counselor Post was asking not too long ago about the market. With this candidate pool, how, what's your strategy to diversify this pool? I just want to make sure that we have an opportunity to look at candidates who are women, candidates who are people of color. So what is the breakdown that you typically have in your candidate pool in terms of its diversity? And if it doesn't meet the goal that you'd like to meet, what's your strategy to diversify it?
It's a really good question as well. So we, our standard target all the time, and this is for any of our searches across the company, is we try to have at least twenty to thirty percent diversity on the candidate slate as a whole. That being said, with our public sector searches, if we are working with a community that has diversity, demographics that are greater than that within their community, we adjust our strategy and our goals around that to be more reflective of the community. So that is something that we will look at for each individual client, to make sure that, you know, when we bring you a candidate slate, we want you to feel really comfortable that we've been comprehensive and exhaustive in that approach. So that answers one portion of your question. And then from a sourcing and recruiting standpoint, I'll use the word deliberate again. It's being very thoughtful and deliberate in how we reach out to candidates, but also using associations to help connect us with candidates that might be, you know, open to new opportunities as well. And so, you know, thankfully, in this space, there's a number of different organizations that are supporting, you know, many different groups that we're gonna want to be pursuing. And so that's the great news, is that there's a lot of tools in the toolbox for diversity recruiting in the public sector specifically. And we use all of them. And some of that is even just where we post the position, right? So we're gonna make sure that we post it in a few different places where we can access, you know, candidates that might be looking. But that being said, it's also, you know, when we are looking at, for example, pursuing, or doing our deliberate research with specific organization websites and things, it's kind of looking through and saying, okay, you know, do we have a few different people here that might be a fit? Like, how are we looking at the candidate pool as a whole, you know, when we're doing that targeted research? And we do have to be really thoughtful, because as you may have seen, you know, over the years, the, historically, the city manager market has been dominated by white males, you know, frankly. And so over time, we've seen that change a little bit. I think where we're not seeing it, not, we're seeing some change, but we need to see a little bit more aggressive change, is actually in women's city managers. We don't have a lot of those across the country right now. And so we're seeing some shifts, but it's gonna take some time, obviously, and people having the, or being given the opportunity to move into those seats.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you, Christine. And Kelly, we appreciate Christine, you being here and answering so thoroughly our questions. Great presentation. So Kelly, I will turn it back to you so that we can entertain the next group.
I'm gonna move you over, Kristin.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. That was terrific.
Thank you, Kristin, so much. Yes, good seeing you today. Mayor, do we have time for a three-minute bio break?
Yes.
Can we do that, please?
Okay.
Okay, it appears everyone is back. So welcome, Anne Lewis from Baker Tilly. Thank you so much for agreeing to come and speak with us today. So I will So I will turn it over to you now.
Great. Thank you so much, Mayor. Appreciate being here this morning. Can everyone hear me okay? Just want to make sure our technology is good. Great, thank you. Well, I am going to share some slides with you this morning to help guide the conversation regarding the recruitment for your next city manager. Again, I'm pleased to be here. And we have at Baker Tilly appreciated the longtime relationship that we've had with Salisbury. Previously, our firm was known as Springstead or Springstead Waters and have had a relationship prior to Baker Tilly acquiring our firm and have worked with the city in a few different capacities. So again, pleased to be here this morning, and I'm going to share my screen as I use some slides to help guide our conversation. So again, I mentioned that Baker Tilly has a longstanding foot in executive search, having served previously as a search firm under the name of Springstead Waters. And we are one of the largest firms that conducts public sector executive searches. We do not do any private sector searches. Our focus is solely on public sector. And our consultants, which I'll talk with, review with you in a few minutes, are all having served local governments in their past and remain connected to local government through their work as a consultant for executive search. We really pride ourselves on working very collaboratively with the communities that we serve and quite honestly, with the clients or with the candidates that we bring forward. We have, since we've served local governments and have long relationships and continue to nurture those relationships, the candidates know that they're going to be trusted with their information with us that we're sharing with our clients. And they understand that we are going to fully vet those candidates so that there are no surprises. And I'll talk a little bit about no surprises during searches as I go on in this, in this presentation. I want to emphasize that this is the city's search. We will tailor it to what your needs are. We have some, some suggestions along the way that we'll make as far as best practices and things that have worked for communities. I have served several communities in North Carolina, having just recently completed the Town of Carrboro's Town Manager Search. And we've also completed a search for the Asheville City Manager as far as the high-level positions or the CAO positions. We've worked with other communities in North Carolina, serving their executive recruitment services as well. So we are passionate about local government. We know that this is where you're making a difference in the lives of, of your residents, of, of the, of the folks that serve your communities, whether it's business owners or employ- employees of those business owners. And so we're very mindful of how we conduct these searches and the candidates that we bring to you to best serve you at your local level. We have 10 full-time professionals that help our search processes. We've got five consultants and then five support staff who are solely dedicated to executive search. As I mentioned, this is your search. Every, every search is unique. We conduct a national outreach, but we then focus on a regional nature. We never know who has ties to the community and who's ready to return. I was recently doing a search for Fond du Lac, Wisconsin, and one of their candidates ended up moving from Arizona. They were a alumni of the Wisconsin college system, and they were ready to move back to be closer to family. And so again, we'll conduct a national outreach, but that we will focus it regional in nature, understanding that there are North Carolina, Virginia, South Carolina, you know, it's that mid-Atlantic area that is a little different than, you know, the West Coast approach to local government, as an example. Our price is an all-inclusive price, so once we determine what we're doing for the community that we're serving, then it is a price that we will stick to and stick with the client until we place a CAO for the community that we're serving. We do have some great technology that we utilize to help facilitate our communications with candidates. You'll have me as your consultant, and I will serve and provide a weekly update to you as we go through the recruiting process. I, I very much believe in regular communication so that everyone understands what tasks are ahead of us and who's responsible for those tasks. But there is technology to help facilitate some of that. And, and one of that technology includes our very expansive database of about 30,000 candidates who we have worked with over the past 30 years. And that bank of people that we will contact to say, are you interested? Or do you know of anyone who might be interested? And so as we go through this process, as I mentioned, I want to be very hands-on approach with what your needs are, have a good understanding of what is best for Salisbury, and then deliver a candidate pool that when you're in your deliberation phase, I hope you'll at some point turn to me and say, Anne, this is hard. These are a great group of candidates, and it's a matter of us really getting to know them to see who's going to be our next city manager. And so that's how I work to exceed your expectations in presenting a diverse candidate pool. And again, we will stay with you in this search until you find a candidate. And should that candidate leave within a year, then we will perform that search again at no cost except for the cost of placing advertisements. That's part of our triple guarantee. So our team is across the United States. I'm located here in Virginia in our Northern Virginia office of Tyson's. I actually spend a great deal of time in North Carolina. My daughter lives in Edmonton. And in the work that we've done with our North Carolina communities, whether it be through executive search or the pay and classification studies that we perform, I've spent a lot of time in, in, in the North Carolina region. I, my colleagues do also reside in Minnesota, Texas, and Missouri. And what this does is allow us to have a great outreach to candidates, again, who may be in those areas of the country and are ready to relocate. And we can, we, we meet every week to talk about our searches and to say, who do you know that would like to be in Salisbury? And this is what this city is about. And this is the opportunities that are in this city. Who do we know that would be a great candidate in this area? And because we take a great deal of time to get to know our candidates, we really have some input and insight into their experience and how they might be able to serve the city. So we have a three-to-four month process that again, we'll, we'll, we'll develop a timeline once we engage in a, in a contract. And I say the three-to-four months because it, it depends upon some of the, the parts of the process that you may choose to include. It's really important at the onset that I meet with you and get to understand what you're looking for. And so we can do that individually or collectively, whichever you prefer. But what I find is that when we meet with the elected body and then meet with a leadership team, we really get a good understanding of what Salisbury is about and what you're looking for to serve your community. And so we'll request, you know, some initial materials to help us get started. We'll do some initial background on the community as we work toward developing this profile, which will be the foundation for our search. And we will utilize in marketing the position and placing advertisements. But, you know, it was interesting because in hearing about what the city is doing with, you know, the recent homelessness fair, the Empire Hotel redevelopment, the Bell Tower Green Park, there are a lot of great things going on in Salisbury that, and I, and I know that Mr. Bailey said in 2029, it'll be a great place, a great time to be on city council or city manager. And I, because of the completion of, of, of that outstanding debt, but I would certainly say that what the work that has been done over the years to where you are now, it's a really a great time to be in Salisbury, and I think it'll be a very attractive position to recruit for. And so what we do here in the, in the onset is our, what I call our, our initial building block for our recruitment. We'll conduct outreach after we have developed this profile and, and send marketing letters to candidates through the technology that we have in our database. What I find is, however, that there are great candidates that are working and not necessarily looking for another position because particularly in the time that we are in now, they're serving their communities and, and addressing the needs of the pandemic. But once I call and say, hey, I have this position, would you take a look at it? And I talk about the opportunities that are there, it gets them excited and, and that they do eventually put in for the position. And, and that's been a very successful approach for us. Certainly, we use LinkedIn and other social media, other, other organizations, including the National Forum for Black Public Administrators and ICMA and the state associations. But sometimes our best candidates that we have found are those that are, aren't currently working. It's important for us to outreach to a diverse candidate pool. I want to tell you that in last year that, just make sure I get this right, 78% of our applicants provided their race as part of the EEO question that we ask. And of those, 22% were women and about 15% were people of color. And so what we're finding is that that data is changing each year as we work to further develop those relationships with those organizations and with those individuals. And as, quite honestly, those individuals progress through their career, we're seeing a larger number of women and people of color apply to these executive-level positions in our, in our recruitments. Each week during our outreach process, we'll provide you with a project status report. And that will tell you where we are in the recruitment process as far as the number of applicants and what that applicant pool looks like by gender and ethnicity. And, and what we do know is that oftentimes those numbers increase fairly significantly at the very final week of a recruitment. I'm working on one right now in here in Virginia where literally I was at 22 candidates the, the few days before my first review date, and I've jumped to 45 candidates. And so I, I appreciate the, the good work that candidates are doing to understand what that community is about, and they're doing their homework before they apply so that they're showing a genuine, genuine interest in being, being considered as a candidate. Once we determine who the most qualified candidates are of the pool, we will ask candidates to participate in a couple additional steps. One of those steps is to respond to a series of questions that I'll develop based upon those initial interviews that I've had with you and, and the stakeholders. And what this does is provide kind of a level understanding for you when you're reviewing, because we all prepare our cover letter and resume in different ways. But this provides you a level understanding of their experience in the areas that we have discussed are most important to you. And the other thing that we ask candidates to complete is this due diligence form. And that is because, as I mentioned early on, I don't like surprises in a search. I wa- I am, I work toward having a very good understanding of the community and presenting that information to the candidates. And in turn, I ask candidates to provide information to me that is either publicly available or is available as part of this process whereby they let us know if they've been negotiated a severance package with their community. We understand that that happens. There's turnovers at elections, and sometimes a council may want to go in a different direction. And so we ask for a due diligence form to confirm any other information. I'll conduct a telephone interview with each of the candidates that I've asked to move forward in the process. And what this does is get me a, a real personal understanding to their interest in the position and helps me determine whether or not they should be presented as, as a semifinalist. And then finally, one, another technology that we use is a video interview. Not so unlike what we're doing here today, we will ask the candidate to place themselves in front of a computer and respond to three different questions that will, that they will not have knowledge of ahead of time. And the question appears on the screen, and then they will, they will answer each question within three minutes. So what this does is give you an opportunity to see how they speak extemporaneously. And again, these questions will be introduced or developed based upon our initial conversations on what's important to you. So what this does is give you an opportunity to see their, their cover letter, their resume, their written responses to questions and the experience that's important to you, and then see how they speak in a video, pre-recorded video format. And then finally, the technology that we utilize is a talent assessment. At the onset of a search, I will ask city council to participate in a survey whereby you're going to identify the leadership and management traits you'd like to see in your next city manager. I will aggregate those scores and come up with a summary that will, I will then overlay with the individual candidate scores that are the finalists. And what this does is, is let, let us see graphically what that fit is between how the candidate describes their leaderships and management style to what city council is looking for. I overlay the two, and if there are any gaps, then I'll develop interview questions to see how the candidate may meet the needs of the community. Again, it's another technology that is really very accurate and does use the DISC tool to assess that fit. Prior to the final interview process, we will conduct a comprehensive background check, which includes all of these items that you see on the screen. It is, takes about 10 to 15 days to complete this because we are utilizing outside entities, you know, court systems, et cetera, to get this information, and we're at their mercy of, of completion. But typically, it's 10 to 15 days. And during the same time, we're conducting references on candidates to get an understanding. So that when we're presenting you with a finalist report, it will include a, as I mentioned earlier, their cover letter, resume, the candidate questionnaire, their response, a link to their video interview, their background information. I'll provide you the articles that we find on candidates. And then we'll develop what that final interview process looks like. You know, one of the things that the pandemic has done for us is allowed us to utilize technology in, in better ways. And I've had very good success with communities conducting first-round interviews virtually and second-round interviews in person. But we'll develop that in, in the way that you would like to meet these candidates. And so if that means that you want to do both rounds in person, or if you just want to do one round, we can do that. I'll help you develop interview questions. If you want to have a multiple panels interview candidates, or if you'd like to have a meet and greet, we can develop that as well. I can provide matrices by which those other panel, you and those other panels can evaluate candidates in areas that are important, such as financial acumen, leadership style, et cetera. And we can help create a feedback process so that city council can get an understanding of the perspective of either community stakeholders or your executive leadership team has on each one of those candidates. And then finally, I can help with negotiations if you would like me to participate in that manner and help you with creating a, a contract if needed. So that is my formal presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Anne. So now I'll open it up to council, if you have any questions for Anne. If you have any questions for Anne.
Hi, Anne. Thank you so much for your time today. Just a couple of clarity questions for me. I know that you discussed your report. You used the TTI report you wanted to give us a snapshot. Can you explain to me, I saw in the packet that your proposal it boiled down into different categories, D I S C. Exactly, can you tell me what each one of those is about? And then how do you overlay that, the results of that report of the candidates to how you because I know you use more than that to make recommendations. And how does that layer together?
Yes. So let me just pull this up so I have that right in front of me. So the DISC style is the the D I S C is dominant, influential, steady, and compliant. And those are different aspects of leadership. And you'll hear folks say who use that particular tool that they can have a high dominant style or a low dominant style or a high I, low I. And so as an example, a dominant style is going to have characteristics of someone being ambitious and pioneering and determined. While a low dominant style means that they're agreeable, modest, and peaceful, just as an example. The tool is not a pass fail. The tool is not a someone has to, that that high I is better than low I. But it gets you an understanding as to their style and how that style then compares to what city council would like. So there is a survey that city council would take. It takes about a half an hour to complete, half hour to forty minutes to complete. And it it's a survey that's not necessarily specific to city management, but it's consistent with leadership. And what this does is ask you in a series of questions that quite honestly seem duplicative in nature. But it's trying to tease out the theme of what you're looking for in your next city manager as their leader. And then the finalists take a companion survey that similarly is duplicative in nature, where they are responding to a series of questions that they are identifying who they are, what their style is like. So in overlaying that, that looks at fit. And that's just one component as to what you're looking at when you're considering who your candidates are. Certainly, you want to have a great understanding of what their experience is and how that experience can translate to your community. You know, the the work that has been done in the community outreach with the Chit Chat and Chew with the addressing homelessness and the increase and focus on the diversity in your workforce. You're going to want to make sure that you have candidates that are going to align in those areas as well. As just an example of of what I've looked at regarding your community. If someone isn't active in those areas or doesn't show a strong interest, then that would be, you know, something else that we'd want to consider. And so in looking at creating those initial candidate questionnaire, questions, that is going to help determine what those priorities are for you as a council that you're looking at with these candidates. And then look at their soft skills as well through the DISC assessment or the talent assessment. I hope that's responsive to your question.
Yes, thank you. And and I had just one other clarifying question. You mentioned that you had like thirty thousand established bank of talent. Do you kind of begin your searches there with looking for that fit? Do or do you expand out first and and see who's interested? How do you approach that bank of people that you already have the talent?
So what we will take a look at is community size. Because certainly someone who served a particularly small community of a thousand or two thousand may not have the experience or relatable experience for the community of, you know, thirty-three thousand. So part of what we look at when we are narrowing that bank of of candidates that we have is the communities that they've served, the longevity in the communities they've served, or the longevity in the profession. We want to take a look at the their portfolio of departments that they have overhead oversight. If they are have been an ACM, Assistant City Manager, Assistant County Administrator, and are moving up to a city manager position, or if it's more of a lateral position. So those are some of the initial things that we look at when we are sending out a recruitment mailing to candidates, beginning with that larger candidate pool before we really know that down.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tamra. So any other question?
I'll go ahead, David.
Go ahead, Al.
That's fine. Go ahead, Al.
Okay. So I I'm very interested in your in your dibs. As you talk about the diversity, inclusion, and belonging, I was very impressed by that and really appreciate you integrating that into how you do your work. But how will you approach the piece around equity and how a candidate understands the importance of equity in an organization?
Thank you for that question. It's it's an important area for us that should a community find that important? It's it's an area that we really delve into and understanding. So we'll do that in a couple of ways. One is we we're sure to present that in the recruitment brochure. The community's emphasis on that. And the town of Carrboro's brochure is one that we did a, I think, a really good job of weaving throughout their materials, their importance on that. We'll design the candidate questionnaire to get a better understanding of what their philosophy and approach to equity is. We will also, you know, potentially use a video interview question. And then again, you know, we'll you create in-person questions. I'll ask that during my phone interview. It it is a way that we get an understanding from them in written and verbal form as to their belief system, their work in that area, and how they would approach it. Certainly, it is some community, it is apparent that some communities are further along. And so therefore, we've got some candidates that are further along in their experience. So because they haven't necessarily done the work already, doesn't mean that they aren't capable of doing the work. And so we want to gauge what their knowledge level is and and how their approach would be based upon what the current status is in the in the community that they're applying for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David?
Hey, Anne. First of all, thank you for, I think, a great presentation and for doing your homework and having a really good grasp of Salisbury. That was really impressive. My my questions are about the market. You know, what's the condition of the market? You know, with the the so many people, the great resignation going on, how how do you feel about the market in general? And second is related to that is look looking at your list of folks that you've placed in the last few years in this area, region, I should say, is, does it does it make sense to look regionally as opposed to nationally because you know, th- this area of the world is has different issues than, say, the Midwest or the you know, the Great Plains or the West Coast or New England for that matter. I mean, you know, our issues are different, our, as Mayor Potem pointed out, our demographics are different. Our concentration on, I mean, our a- access to water, you know, which some areas of the nation don't have, is, you know, is you know, we're different. And so does that mean that you sort of look in areas that might already have a similarity to ours?
Thank you for your question. So it it, you know, it is interesting when we when we look over the past year at the recruitments we've worked on and and while we may have seen a small decrease in candidate pools at the very onset of the pandemic because the C A O or the positions we were recruiting for felt an allegiance to stay staying with their community because of the unknown and that loyalty to serve. We have seen an increase, I would say, in in particularly the last six months of candidates who are willing to leave their community to serve another community, and that's for various reasons. And, you know, there's a lot of reflection on careers and a reflection on where they're at in their career and where they're at in balancing that with their personal life and personal goals. So I I would say our our candidate pools may be a bit smaller than where they were two years ago, but that quantity doesn't necessarily translate into quality of candidates. So I still need one candidate. You're going to hire one candidate. And so, but I do want to make your diff- your decision difficult in in presenting a pool of candidates that are highly qualified to serve your community. So I mentioned that we conduct a a national outreach, but yes, there is certainly a regional focus. I remember, you know, twenty years ago, when I first began serving local government, Virginia managers stayed in Virginia. North Carolina managers stayed in North Carolina. And over the past ten years at least, I've seen a lot more crossing of the state line, so to speak. We've got several mi- several colleagues, I have several colleagues that I served with here in Virginia that are now serving North Carolina very successfully. And so, you know, we used to say that the Commonwealth of Virginia as a Dillon Rule state was kind of different and kind of special. And, you know, could someone from outside of Virginia really come in and be able to serve? Well, certainly, certainly they can come in and serve. And and obviously, Mr. Bailey is an example of having served Radford that he can, you know, there are there are absolutely transferable skills. But the that North Carolina, Virginia, we are unique in in our state laws and and the 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 demographics and really the feel of what our state is addressing and approaching. And so therefore, what trickles down to our communities and what our communities then are addressing and how they will approach it. So it's a it's a national focus with a regional, or it's a national outreach with a regional focus. We never know who wants to come home, so to speak, to North Carolina. We never know who has an interest. You know, I I've said to my husband, now that our daughter lives in North Carolina, and she's expecting her first grandchild, you know where we'll be in our retirement years. So, but you never know who has that, who has that going on in their personal life and who wants to relocate for those reasons. And so that's that's why we we cast a wide net and then really kind of bring that into focus as we get into reviewing our candidates and their mission and desire to to serve your community.
Do you feel like there's a reasonable pool of candidates in North Carolina in in the southeast and regions that sort of look and feel like we do?
I do. You know, it it was, it's been interesting, you know, and I'll use the town of Carrboro as an example. What I think is really important is how we present the community. And that's what really gets someone excited to serve a community. What's happening and and what is? What will they be working on? And, you know, that's that comes to the core of that that person who has chosen this career as a profession. But I see in our recruitments that we've done in North Carolina, Virginia, Maryland, that and Florida, even as of recent, I've seen some candidates be interested in each of those states. But for really specific reasons, for really specific projects that they wanted to be a part of, or activities that they've wanted to be a part of. And how how open and welcoming the community will be to someone that might not be from the community or even from the state. And so as much as you are interviewing candidates, they're going to be interviewing you and and driving around the city to see what the city has to offer. And then, you know, ob- obviously, at the greater area, the greater Rowan County to get an understanding of of what North Carolina is about and where they'll be serving. But I feel confident that there is going to be a a strong applicant pool and a strong interest in in the city. So, you know, when you have a community that is robust in many ways, it's got a solid leadership, it's financially stable. You know, those are kind of the the big picture things that people look at and then go, okay, what what is this community really about? So, yes, sir, I do believe we'll have a strong candidate pool.
You mentioned Carrboro. If y'all don't mind, I have one more real quick question. Carrboro, you've helped find two city managers, town managers, six years apart, twenty fifteen and twenty twenty-one. We've Salisbury's had city managers that you know, lasted, you know, fifty, sixty, seventy years. I say that, you know, a little bit of hyperbole, but and and is, are we seeing? Are you seeing quicker turnover now? I mean, people, you know, four, five, six, seven years? Are you seeing more of that than you might have seen in years past? You said you've been doing this twenty years.
You know, I think it's dependent, sir. I think, you know, if you look at what the International City County Management Association says that that a C A O is typically a five to seven year appointment to a community. But like you, I mean, I served a city manager who was with our community for twenty years. I served another city manager who was with the community, had actually come from North Carolina and served a community for about fifteen years. So it it is certainly dependent. I have seen a little bit more, and and obviously, they work at the pleasure of the elected body. And so it kind of depends on that elected body's approach and what's happening in the community and and you know, the relationships that you you face a lot of things as elected officials, and how can that C A O help you navigate those those challenges and making sure that there's good, open lines of communication so that they, the C A O can successfully lead the day-to-day operations to meet the strategic plan of the community. So I I think it, I think it depends. I'd like to, I like to see a a longer tenure. I think that continuity serves a community really well. But it 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 depends is probably the best answer I can give you at this time.
Thank you very much. Yes, Brian, please.
Yeah, just a couple of questions and and just speaking about the breadth of your organization, I'm curious, how many typical searches do you handle at a time? And do you ever get to a point where say, this is about the capacity we can handle, or is it always, we can always handle one more? How do you? How do you approach competing searches and where would Salisbury fit in the criteria of size of communities you're working with right now?
That's a great question. And it's actually, Mr. Miller, something that we've talked about as a team because while, as you look through my presentation today, I I break up my searches into about five different task areas. And when I'm, when I'm looking at where whether to propose and negotiate a contract with a community, I look at where all of my searches are with all of my consultants, because there certainly is a capacity level that we reach. And I would say about a month ago, we were at that capacity level where we were not considering additional proposals that were from communities that were not familiar to us. So each of our recruitments are at various phases dependent upon when they started. And so we have the capacity to handle additional recruitments at this time. I average anywhere to from seven to ten regular searches because as one is completing, another one is is starting. And so we have that capacity to to do that. One of the things that we look at when we consider new searches is, again, the size of the organization, not so much, because we look at, we we have served communities of one thousand to of one thousand to over a hundred fifty thousand. We look at where that proximity is to the consultant so that we can be readily available to the community. And in this capacity, I'm readily available to North Carolina. And then, again, we look at the relationship that we have with the community that we're talking with about serving as an executive recruitment. And I'm pleased that we've worked with Salisbury in the past. And so we have some familiarity with the organization and with the community.
And just to confirm, you would be the person that would be the point person for our search if if we we enter into a contract? Is that correct?
That's correct, sir, I would be your consultant.
Okay, gotcha. One of the elements of our situation, which may, I would imagine you might have found in your research, but just in case you haven't, I'll mention it. There is no doubt there will be a different set of faces that will be part of the end of the search as opposed to the beginning of the search. I am certain that you have run into that before. How will you, being the the first part of the search, being the most important, developing a community profile and understanding what's important to the community? How will you ensure that new voices that are in in the seats of the council will have input to the process and will not be mismatched with what you came up perhaps with the faces you're dealing with now? So how would, how will you manage that process?
Yeah, that's a great question and one that, you're right, we have faced in the in the past. And so I'll take a little bit of direction from the from the sitting sitting council as to how much interaction I can have with the potential new council members. That varies, quite honestly, from community to community. And so we want to make sure that we execute the timeline to work according to what you would like. For an example, I have a community that has an election in November, and they have decided to hold off on starting the recruitment until January one, when the new council sits. And that it was their decision. And and so we are flexible to be able to work with them on at the time that they want to initiate. Should Salisbury want to initiate the recruitment immediately? Then what I would ask is that I have the ability to conduct some one on one conversations with those new council members so that I have their input. And when we create the recruitment brochure, I will present it to you and ask that you approve it. So that will weave in what I've heard from all of the current council members, the potential new council members, even your leadership team, because I think your staff brings a perspective of that day to day interaction with your city manager. And so I will ask for your approval as a body on what you see in that recruitment brochure. And I think, you know, at the at this, at this level, you you're probably not looking for drastically different things from your city manager. You know, it's, these are leadership traits. You you've had a, you know, wonderful relationship with Mr. Bailey. And and so you you see kind of what his style is, what he brings. And we'll we'll tease out a little bit further if there's, you know, changes that you'd want or experiences that you want your next C A O to bring. But certainly, some of those existing opportunities that are in your community will be there, whether it's, you know, whether we start the recruitment tomorrow or in thirty days, that that those those opportunities will be there. So I think having the ability to have some conversations with the next elected body will be a helpful way to make sure that we're incorporating their thoughts and ideas into the recruitment process.
Thank you. I think I've got questions that have been asked by my peers. Or I've covered my other questions. I I want one question that I don't think I've heard an answer to from from you. And I and I know your answer is likely going to be whatever you want we can do. But what would be your guidance as it relates to collecting input from key stakeholders in the community? Where would that be in the process? Again, I'm not trying to give you my cards first, I want to hear your response. Where would that fit in the process? How have you done that in the past? What do you think is best practice?
Thank you for that question, because I probably really should have addressed that in my presentation. I I have conducted surveys at the onset of a of a search whereby I seek and solicit some material from stakeholders. And, you know, I don't define stakeholders as only being residents, because certainly you have business owners that may not be residents, and you have employees of businesses or even your own employee base that may not be residents. And so I I use stakeholders as a real broad term. One way to solicit input is through a survey. But we have to recognize that not all folks have access to technology that might be surveyed. And so if we need to conduct some focus groups at the onset, we could do that as well. And we could work with your marketing and communications folks to make sure that that is delivered in ways that you reach your community. So at the onset is one opportunity whereby you could seek information from stakeholders. Then another opportunity is during the interview process. And we could solicit a panel of stakeholders to participate as a interview panel. And what I would recommend is, you know, some structured questions that would relate to concerns that they may have as stakeholders. And some of those stakeholders may be employees or your leadership team. So again, we could structure a an interview panel or a meet and greet with your leadership team. And what I say when we're at that point in the process is, I'm not asking those participants to rank candidates, because I believe that that is your role as the elected body and the person who's going to be selecting your next city manager. Rather, we're looking at soliciting their feedback as to what strengths they believe those candidates will be bringing to Salisbury or where areas that they think that they may not be a good fit for the city. And I would compile that information and provide that to you in a report. So it's interesting you ask about, you know, what are best practices? And I I really do want to emphasize that our searches are really tailored to a community. Sometimes I hear from an elected body that they believe that it's their most important decision to hire the city manager. They know what that they've been elected to represent the community and they know what their community would like to see. Other times I have had communities say, Anne, you know, it's not unlike us to, for every project that we have, that we're seeking some some community input. And so to not do that on a city manager's search would be uncommon for us and and outside our norm. And so I would want to make sure that we're providing something that's consistent with how you reach out to your community and and seek input. It is one of the most important decisions you're going to make. Obviously, your budget is another, a a very important decision that your C A O is presenting to you and and helps shape your community for years to come. And so knowing that you want the city manager to to come to your community and and or be in your community and active in your community. And it'll depend upon how much outside input from from those community stakeholders that you want to receive and how you want to receive it. But we certainly have ways that we can help facilitate that and provide you material for your for you to review.
Good answer, and I I did answer I expected, but it sounded a lot better than whatever you guys want we'll do. But I'm picking on you just a little bit. Now, I I understand that that's an individual trait or or decision from the community, but I do appreciate the thoroughness of the way you answered it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'll yield the floor.
Okay, thank you. Any other last questions from any council member before we?
Yes, I do. I I really love how in your package that you gave to us and that you talked in in depth about the different organizations that you'd be reaching out to in order to give us a diverse, you know, slate of candidates. If you find yourself in a situation where that pool of candidates is not as diverse as you would like it to be, what's going to be your strategy to go back and present us with a diverse slate of candidates?
Thank you for that question. You know, as a woman who has served a community, and I remember sitting on the dais when I was in Harrisonburg, Virginia, and someone, I was the only female on the dais, and someone came up to me after the meeting and said, thank you for sitting there, thank you for your position. And I didn't realize until that point, you know, what a difference that meant to the community that I was serving. And so it has always been a passion of mine in in my roles, serving the local governments and and how am I representing the community that we serve through our employee base? But then even more so in the searches that I conduct now. And so I've taken great pride in developing relationships with those organizations, very active in the Virginia Women Leading Government, very active in a in another organization whereby we're trying to figure out how can we attract women and people of color, not underrepresented candidates in our pools? And it's, I'll tell you, it's not easy. And sometimes it's, I I was presenting to the National Association of County Administrators earlier in June. And my my final thought to the audience, and that was an audience of local government staff and elected officials. I I said to elected officials, please be open to having can diverse candidate pool. And then to the women in the audience, please apply, because if I don't have you in the candidate pool, I can't present you. And so I am constantly seeking out candidates and having conversations that aren't even related to the searches I'm working on to help encourage women and people of color to apply for positions. If I get to a point in a search where I feel like I have not attracted a large candidate a diverse candidate pool, and and this will be through that weekly report that I provide to you, you know, I may say, I need a few more days, I need another week, I need to be able to do some additional outreach. I talk with candidates who are serving communities and say, who do you know? Because I need them to apply. It's really hard when I don't have them in the pool to present to you. And so it's how how am I reaching out to them to get them interested and to apply? I think I've I've been successful. I think that candidates, again, know that we will treat them with respect and we will, you know, respect also their their ability to remain. How do I put this? You know, they're they're serving a community, and if they are not that one person selected, they want to continue to to serve their community. And so there's a certain anonymity in the process that they want to, hopefully, the community is able to protect, which is unlike our searches in in Florida that are, you know, really open sunshine. So I may come to you and say, I I'm not, I'm not pleased with the diversity in the candidate pool, because I know that that's something that you value, and could I have another week or two? It's it's, again, this work that we do at the very beginning, that's going to set the stage for everything going forward as far as your conversations then with the candidates and understanding their experiences. But do know in the end, I want the, I want the best qualified candidate for you to serve your community, because that's who's going to be, you know, excited about being there and excited about the projects and challenges that you have.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, any other questions for Ms. Lewis? Okay, if not, Kelly, we will have you move Ms. Lewis and then we'll
Thank you, Anne.
Thank you very much, it's been a pleasure to serve.
Yes, thank you, Anne, very much for your presentation. And then council can begin their deliberation or decision about how to move forward.
Chief Lieutenant, attending mayor.
Okay, thank you. So I guess we'll open the floor now for comments from the council and how you want to move forward. We have a suggested motion if you're ready to make a decision or if you want to discuss. The floor is open.
I I'll jump in, not that this will be my final comment, but just to kind of level set a couple of things. It does appear that both firms can accommodate a timeline of basically three to four months. So I don't think there's any difference in that regard. There was some difference in the amount of cost. Find great people at thirty five thousand, Baker Tilly at twenty four, five plus optional services that might also add up to that same amount. So I think those are probably going to be consistent also. So I don't think we're picking between who could do it within our timeframe or who can do it for a certain cost. I think we're pretty much on the same page in that regard. You know, I don't think we can go wrong either way, just to be candid. I I feel like they both did well, had good presentations, I think they're both qualified. So I'll just start there as a as a opening salvo and see what other, you know, likes or dislikes anyone had about what they heard today.
I would concur with what you just said, Brian. I think either firm could really do a good job for us. But I I think a key difference for me is is that Baker Tilly really seemed to have good specifics about our community, what our needs are. Her homework seemed to be just very targeted on us, which is certainly something that we need. And 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 I did appreciate her questions. I mean, her answers better when we talked about equity and also making sure that she was going to present to us a diverse candidate pool. I I think she did a better job with that.
Anybody else want to weigh in?
I said I'd I'd comment briefly on that. I agree with both Alan and Brian. If you scroll through their team members, I think they have about seven of them. Their team is fair is fairly diverse. You know, people of color, male, female. I mean, it's an interesting group of, I mean, they they kind of practice what they preach. You know, I I thought both both firms were very very impressive, anticipated leaning toward find great people before the presentations, after the presentations. I was very impressed, like I said, when I asked her the question with her knowledge of Salisbury already, her homework. I'm also impressed with what they've done. They they gave us a sampling of the four hundred people that they've placed. And it's not only diverse, but it's a lot of cities roughly our size, a lot of cities in our neighborhood. And I'm sure they're both qualified. I just, I was and and the other thing is Baker Tilly, this is an acquired firm, they they acquired another firm that we have worked with. I did not know that, and I think that's helpful. But the the only searches they do is for, you know, city county style governments. I mean, this there, this particular group's practice is limited solely to that. So I was, I ended up finding myself leaning to Baker Tilly as opposed to find great people, although I went into this expecting to go the other way. And it's paper thin difference, but nonetheless, that's kind of, you know, where my feeling is. I also like the fact that to go to, I forget who asked this question, but there was the issue that we will be different, and Brian's question, Brian's comment. You know, within a month or thereabouts, city council will have at least two new people. And I like the way Anne said that, you know, as soon as, and I think the other city that she was working with, they don't change over until the first of January, though we change over the first of December or, you know, it's fourth and fifth or whenever it is. But I like the fact that she said she would then reach out to the new people on city council and kind of go through this process with them and get their thinking as they move forward, which I think is great since we're at the front end of the process and to get the new city council people, at least two, maybe four, you know, completely engaged in the process at the front end. I like that answer. I'm I'm sure find great people would do the same thing, except that it was addressed by Anne upfront. I think Brian asked the question twice to both of them. So maybe you have different recollection to the answer, Brian, that's my recollection.
No, I mean, it's clear that both firms, if you do any of these searches occasionally, you're going to find issues relative to elections and and new new faces and all that stuff. I think they both answered it well. You know, one thing, I was kind of trying to not tip my hand about what I think should happen and and get Anne to give her perspective. She basically uh indic indicated that if if we want to give her access to those folks ahead of time, that she'd do that. If you want to give them access after the election, she'd do that. So it's really most of these things are whatever the county community wants, we'll do. Uh, but I thought she answered it. Well, both of them did, I think. And 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 in case it matters, my own pers perspective on that is it ought to be after the election, unless it's some sort of other community-wide thing that we do that we just include the community. But I I think I personally, if we go this direction, again, I'm I may not have a, I'm just giving my opinion. Personally, I do not think, I I do think that we are vested with the role of picking the next city manager. We being the council, I may or may not be the person who's uh will 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 not be the person who'll make the ultimate decision, but I think that's our vested right. I think early in the process, helping us to kind of community develop the community profiles is what I was hoping to hear, and I think both of them said that there was a way to do that. That, I think, is the appropriate level of of community engagement, because again, the confidentiality piece is so paramount. I mean, I can't, I'm not going to speak to this, but the ability to serve in a current community when word gets out that you're applying for a different role, it 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 severely undermines your effectiveness, and and we don't want to get to a place where we're doing that to candidates. But I think it early in the process is the time to do it. So I'll yield the floor.
Thank you, Brian. Anybody else want to weigh in?
I I think we are in a good position. We heard from two great organizations today. Different perspectives for me um and depending on any other council comments that make you, you know, think differently and and say going through their packets um was much more comprehensive than obviously the president. They they both did their, for for me, after hearing both the votes, I would have to say I'm I'm leaning more uh Baker Tilly for a couple of reasons. Um, I I like the attitude of looking for a fit for a community. The uh approach, obviously, for uh the diversity and uh inclusion, but engagement of candidates as well as with our community. I feel like that not only does um Baker Tilly seem to do that internally for their company, it looks like that's how they work externally with with us if we were to hire them. Uh, I like that approach. Um, I like the fact that their net seems pretty wide with an existing pool and how she explained how they would lead and feed that, basically, how they would just get an application in, right? They seem to have a deeper um pool to start pulling some more talent in this role. Specifically, um, I I agree with how the answer of the questions both of how they would involve the council. So I think they tackled our maybe concern of ghosting. And and, you know, and one thing that I liked about Baker Tilly was that Anne said she would be a one of contact. Sure, uh, I'd have been the uh case um for great, I'm great people. But what I did like about Anne was her background has been city management, so she's lived this job before. She has that different perspective. Uh, I don't know if I I caught that from the resume. Leader C from Fine Great People. I I think that just so you guys know, if we're looking for consensus before load or whatever, that that's kind of where I'm at right now. I don't hear some other um dead comics from you all.
Uh, I'll I'll weigh in just on the on some of the other parts that I haven't talked about. I think the weekly status reports. Uh, I I like the format of what I saw in the presentation uh that she shared with, you know, kind of talked about the the candidate pool and 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 different elements of of ways to um sort that, whether it's by gender or ethnicity or experience or what have you. I couldn't read the whole slide exactly, but it looked like it was good. The position of notes on different candidates, keeping the council informed. Uh, again, this will be a choice of someone besides me. Uh, but I think that's good to keep the candidate, uh, the council informed. I I thought that was good. The due diligence forms, uh, which allows, you know, you can have a situation where someone applies and, you know, the fact that they're going through the due diligence to to find out why they're leaving their existing community. Again, we know that there are some changes in elections and other things that will cause those sorts of things, but it's important to understand what those are, and that due diligence form, I think, allows them to capture that and not be surprised. The screening tools, the DISC analysis, I have actually uh done that myself as a as part of my employment with the bank. Uh, and I found it uh accurate uh for me. Doesn't mean it's going to be accurate for everybody, but it was a good analysis um of my own personality and frankly, uh, under the category of opposites to attract, I brought it home, shared it with my wife, and we were the exact opposite of the score. So apparently, the opposites uh do attract, at least worked in our case. So again, I found it relevant in that scenario. I I, you know, I I think Baker Tilly seemed a little um a a ahead of the other, but I I do think that we could be successful with either. So uh, I I think given um that I think everyone so far has expressed that they felt like Baker Tilly might have been the one that won the day, uh, you know, I think we may have a consensus. I'm just, uh, I'm not sure, but I think we might.
Anybody else want to weigh in?
From you, David.
Mayor, I was saying, could I make a motion and then we'll discuss it in the context of a motion?
That that'd be fine.
Would that be appropriate? And and I'll make a motion. We entered a contract with Baker Tilly for an executive recruiting services for the next city manager.
Okay, uh, we have a motion. I will call the question.
Well, should we have some discussion about it? I mean, I admit.
Well, we can do that.
I mean, does anybody else?
We have a motion. Uh, does anyone want to weigh in or have any discussion around the motion?
The only thing I'd like to add is I specifically to Baker Tilly, you know, they they have that one-year guarantee. I think that's a really key component in this, especially being in a position with a company who hires a lot of people and and how the market is today, knowing that we could go back to them and just reengage that recruiting pa piece in one year, because we just don't know how it works. And I like the fact that when when they're looking toward hiring folks, the longevity and consistency for a community in keeping a city manager for a few years versus the one year, the one year, the one year. So for me, I think that really made me more solidified toward Baker Tilly.
Okay, any other comments, any other discussion before I call the question?
Ma- Mayor?
Yeah.
One, uh, this is kind of a personal question. You haven't really weighed in on this, and yet you're pretty involved with cities and counties and cities all over the state. I I was just wondering if you had any reflections on this. I appreciate your deferring to all of us, but since all of our votes count the same, I'm just curious if what your reflection may have been.
Uh, well, I was actually very uh impressed with the uh evaluation process of the the first presentation. Uh, it seemed to me to be um extremely detailed and and comprehensive. Um, but um, you know, I also uh honed in on one of Anne Lewis's uh last comments um uh from Baker Tilly, that at the end of the day, what they want to do is to bring us the best candidate for our community, not based on any preconceived um that it has to be either a woman, a man, any gen, you know, any uh particular uh race. At the end of the day, I think that that was a very important uh summation of her. And so I'm uh happy that they have a process where that that all of those things are taken into consideration as part of the process. But at the end of the day, what Salisbury, North Carolina needs for our citizens is the absolute best city manager that we can recruit. So I did appreciate uh her last comment in regard to that. Given the landscape of uh the fact that just percentage-wise, you're going to have a much larger pool of available uh city managers and a lot more choices uh based on you know, a certain uh demographic, because there's just more of them. So as long as we're open to that, um, I I'm happy with uh the Baker Tilly uh that council seems to be um congealing around. So I I think that uh I'm ready to call the question if everybody, if there are no other questions or comments. Then thank you, David, for the uh motion, and I will call the question. Tamara Sheffield?
Aye.
Al Haggins?
Aye.
Brian Miller?
Aye.
David Post?
Aye.
Karen Alexander?
Aye.
So.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion to adjourn on the floor. Oh, Tamara?
I have a a a question while we are gathered, which is um and I I don't know if I need to do this in the form of a motion, so I'll start it with dialogue. We have yet to schedule a closed session meeting to discuss who will be our interim city manager.
I think that.
At least get a time or something on this calendar, because we know what it's been like to schedule for the following.
Right. Um, given the uh schedule of all of us with the election happening, uh, all of our schedules have been very difficult to align. Then Kelly and I talked about it, and I said, "Let's just wait," and we can certainly, she can send out a poll, but not try to schedule that meeting until we got this in place. And this seemed to be the first step. And then, you know, so uh if Kelly wants to go ahead and send out a doodle poll, then we can schedule a a closed session, which could happen even at the next council meeting, which will be after the election.
Yeah, I know that. We've already moved that the November third meeting around for uh accommodating other schedules. I don't I don't know if proposing the November sixteenth is that attachment to that or whatever, but I know we need to
Yeah, that's that's fine. You know, November sixteenth would be even better.
I just don't want us to get, you know, we need to not wait much longer.
Okay, thank you, uh, Tamara. And uh Brian just had text me on that as well, so I was going to cover that, but it is everyone, since we're all together, is the sixteenth, does that work in everyone's schedule as a closed session? Uh, either before or after that meeting, and you all can decide, because I can do either.
It works for me.
For me at this time.
Okay, and would you prefer before or after the council meeting?
I can do either.
Before.
Before? Okay, Dave?
I'd prefer before, because I think I have a surgery the next day.
Okay, then great. So Kelly, um, you've heard from all of council, and it appears that we can all accommodate a closed session um to discuss personnel issues um before the um the meeting.
Thank you.
On the sixteenth. Thank you, Tamara. So now that if we have no other discussion around uh the motion that David has made to enter into a contract for executive recruiting services for the next city manager with uh Baker Tilly, then I will call the question.
I think you passed that. I made a motion to adjourn.
Oh, excuse me. We, yes, we did.
Let me jump in with one one thing real quick before we adjourn. And and that would just be be guidance for council that with everybody's schedules. If in order for this thing to stay on track, we need you, whoever the council will be, will probably need to have a schedule set. Whether that's um, we we're going to go ahead and say the second week of March or whatever else, we're going to do interviews. You can move it around once you get there, but go ahead and have some places on the calendar in the future in place. So we're not wait working working on six weeks trying to get things scheduled. I I think as soon as you can get that sort of stuff going, the better. If you want to have regular connection with the consultant, whether it's uh bi-weekly or monthly, to go ahead and get those things on the calendar as part of possibly the meeting process, just do it in closed session makes the most sense. But go ahead. I I would encourage you all to not wait until four weeks out to start figuring out schedules to get that stuff done, because again, I I know how hard it's been for us to get things, just this five group, a group of five folks.
Yeah, that's a good point. Brian, maybe we can ask Kelly to go ahead and uh work with um our uh selected uh group and and go ahead and start that process right after the election, because then we would know who the new uh council um members and the decision of the public in terms of all candidate uh positions. So then we could have those dates already in the queue. I think it's a great uh idea um for us. Okay, then um I will, we have a motion to adjourn. If there's nothing else, then I'll call the question. Tamara Sheffield?
Aye.
David Post?
Aye.
Al Haggins?
Aye.
Brian Miller?
Aye.
Karen Alexander, aye. Motion carries. We are adjourned, and we're fifteen minutes before time. So congratulations.